Board of Education. I'm here to make my second and seventh. Please rise for pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Well, Clark, please.
Well, Clark.
Here.
John Highstreet.
Here.
Andy Gillett.
Here.
Jennifer Baker-Baker.
Here.
William Brady.
Here.
Nicole Amory.
Here.
Jan Skatsko.
Here.
Before we get into our recognition of presentations, I would like to make quick motions for amending the agenda to alter our closed session to include a staff discipline conversation. Closed session along with negotiation.
Support sports.
Sports, all of us, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, thank you, that passes. Up first, we have Mr. Trevor Gengler to talk about Eagle Scout project.
First off, I do have some. You have stuff already that you know. My name is Trevor Niemel, and I am a Boy Scout getting ready to become an Eagle Scout. I come before you today to pitch my Eagle Scout project to you. My Eagle Scout project will be redoing the bridge, overdoing, redoing the bridge going over to the discus pit at the preschool and getting new benches made over there and putting up a new net and new hardware for the discus pit. So as it stands, the plan is to remove the current bridge over the ditch, replace it with one that is at a, that is lower so that the groundskeepers can go over with the lawn motors without catching the blades on the bridge, which I can't imagine is good for the blades. We will then replace the hardware for the discus pit and fix one of the, one of the pulleys that fell off of it, I think last year, and it's not really been put back up there, so we'll be replacing it and putting up a new net as well. We will also remove the current benches and replacing ones with that will be better because the ones that are currently there have been a little, they've been whacked out with the weed whacker and it's starting to show. The current working cost for the project is about $3,600. I plan on doing a fundraiser to get most of the money needed for the project, but a donation from the school would be greatly appreciative. I'm thinking about either a bottle drive or a bake sale to get most of the money. There's also, I might be able to do a raffle basket during the Sports Boosters Golf and Dinner fundraiser, and I would like any additional money to go to new implements for the throwing team as we are, only have two boy shots and two rubber discs. All this work is so that we continue to have good transportation over top of that ditch and benches over at the discus pit. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. You said the cost would be thirty, three thousand?
Thirty-six. Yeah, three thousand six hundred.
Okay, unless I added wrong.
It's not everything is in there, that's just for the wood. Everything else, the hardware's not in there, the netting's not in there, which is a lot of that.
I think it's going to be a great project because it's mine over here. It needs, it needs a lot of help, so we appreciate you taking it back to the.
Trevor, you feel if I come see you and, you know, if you run short or whatever, you let me know.
I have a question. When can you come to my house and pick up my bottles of cans? I got some ready to go.
Did you drop them off at the house, Andy?
Of course.
When do you plan on starting this, when it be ready for next track season?
I'm thinking about doing it after track season ends so that we don't mess anything up.
And be prepared for next year's track?
Yes, it should only take over here, too, to do that. That's what I'm thinking, but something could happen.
Trevor, does that bridge get used every time someone comes and goes from there, or is it used?
That's, yes, every time we have an event, it's going over the bridge at a time.
That's how you get there, basically?
Every time somebody's going from the track to there, it's over the bridge.
Yep.
That's your, a bombshell.
That's right.
Well, I helped, I helped the track team when I had students in track. Shot puts over here and then the discuses across the street, across the ditch, and many times the ditch has water. If the ditch doesn't have water in it, everybody just walks through the grass and goes there. But ninety-nine percent of the time, when I was out there in the spring of the year like now, there was water out there, so it, it does get very well used and, yeah.
Sounds like an important project.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Good eye of finding something like that, that's a, that's a good, that's a good catch.
Thank you, and feel free to come back if you ever have questions or want to talk more about.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next, we have our Elgin Act Wrestling Program.
Mr. Ranger, are you ready?
In kind of what's become a annual trip to the podium, Mr. Ranger joins us today, and, you know, it's getting to the point where we're, we're not quite dynasty yet, but we're getting real, real close, and, you know, just the fact that Brian each year, it's, it's the kids, it's the youth kids, it's the academics, and Brian will talk a little bit more about that today, but, you know, as the superintendent of schools, obviously, academics has a whole bunch to do with what we do here, it's nice to wrestle, and, but, you know, Brian instills in his kids that both are extremely important, and it shows because year in and year out, our grade point average for the wrestling team is always in the tops of the state, and again, Brian will have a little bit more about that, but I'm going to turn it over to him today, he's got some things to say about some of his guys and girls.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I want to start, is with thank yous. You know, you've been doing it kind of a while, and you don't even know exactly how many years you've been doing it anymore. I, it's like year twelve, thirteen, fourteen, something like that. So I'm going to read off some, I think, pretty impressive statistics, both in the classroom and on the wrestling mat. You'll get to hear a bunch of names, wrestlers later, I want to start calling names, you can walk around and shake hands and all that, but whatever it was, twelve, thirteen years ago, it, it wasn't like this. We were in pretty tight straits, a lot of people helped out, coaches, parents, administrators, and just this community has really embraced the sport that we also hear in winter, and actually they'll tell you pretty much all year, but it's just impressive, you know, the amount of elementary kids wrestling, the amount of sponsorships when we're going to the state tournament that my parents can, can get to help us afford these amazing opportunities, you know, even as, you know, someone loaning us a van to take eleven state qualifiers down that, down to Ford Field, saving me a couple hundred dollars that way, you know, that kind of stuff means a lot to me and my program, so, our program, so again, thank you to this community. Well, like Al said, we do try to stress student athlete with, with these guys and gals, so want to read off some numbers about the classroom, I want to talk about the high school team this year, including some of ours that really excelled at the highest level, and then I definitely want to talk about our future, our club, because I feel like our future is, is only getting stronger with these wrestlers. So, in the classroom, it was a 3.86 GPA, which was actually third in the state for a school our size, that's actually the highest that we've ever had collectively as a team, 3.86, so we'll get another banner, we'll put that up in the wrestling room. How they do that is they, you can basically keep your fourteen best GPAs. Well, this year, probably had about ten 4.0s, so that made it really easy, and the rest were pretty darn close to that, too, so, real, the high end is, is just doing amazing things in the classroom, and hopefully they're helping instill that with the rest of their teammates. I would love all of my kids to have a 4.0, so 3.86 GPA as a team, that was good for nine individuals to get academic All-State honors, they'll walk around later, but here's some names, Jack Reyes sophomore, Julian Walker sophomore, Jasmine Walker sophomore, Sky Langwich junior, Chris Campbell junior, Lucky Garten junior, Connor Haddad junior, Reed Hiltonin junior, can't forget him, he'll beat me up, and then David, David Clemmons, our only senior, so nine individual All-State, they had to have been a state qualifier, so they had to have made it to Ford Field, and then they had to have had a high GPA for their high school career, so that's pretty impressive. Again, most of these guys and gals are multiple sport athletes, we put a lot on them, in-season, out-of-season, a lot of them are taking IV classes, AP classes, so for them to carry that GPA with all that stuff is really impressive, and then for our first time in school history to apply for it, and I'm going to start applying for this every year because we have some of these kids that are worthy of this, David Clemmons was awarded a NWCA Scholar All-American for his work in the classroom, on the wrestling mat, and then his leadership, so just a round of applause for killing it in the classroom. Once they get to practice and the tournaments, they were pretty formidable as well, so this year we were forty-two and two, that's the most wins in the state of Michigan this year, nobody else had, one other team had in the forties, so forty-two and two. Our two losses were by combined eight points, which in wrestling, that is like razor thin, so we almost won every single match we wrestled this year. That's the most wins in school history, so Mr. Campbell's got some updated on the record boards back there, most pins in school history, most takedowns in school history, we were league champs for the second year in a row, we finished second at the McComb County Tournament, but we were named Team of the Year, we actually wrestled Dakota and Warren Mott, who were co-teams of the year for the big schools, and we beat them both, so first time we ever beat Dakota head-to-head, so we were the McComb County Team of the Year, BWAG champs, first or second place every time we competed, eleven state qualifiers going to Ford Field, so as a team, just some amazing things, and then I got a few more things about some high school individuals, so high school wrestling team, forty-two and two, school record. And then, my high school state placers, if they're here, we just had, won a huge baseball game, so I know a couple of them are out there on the baseball field, so they might not have time to come in, but if they're here, you want them to take a walk and shake hands and announce it.
Yeah.
So we got Reed Hiltonin, he's a two-time All-Stater for the third this year. Lucky Garten, who's just about the baseball field, he's two times the, third in the state, took third again this year, give it a round of applause. Five hundred and fifty, he's a three-time All-Stater, third this year, also a two-time state champion of career. David Clemmons is a four, let me get all this right here, go ahead, Dave, start walking, four-time state qualifier, three-time All-State, he leaves Elgin Act, he's the career leader in takedowns, so you better watch yourself, and the single-season leader in takedowns, that's pretty much his middle name now, David Clemmons. Christopher Campbell is a three-time All-State athlete, he actually, him and Sky will have a chance to be our first four-time All-Staters in a long time since the Rank Brothers, for those who don't know that name, it's been a while, so, Chris Campbell. All right, you, eventually when I say your name, you're going to take the lap, too, okay, so start trickling in this way, Coach Jake's on this way. So, me, what, thirteen years ago, kind of started redoing the high school team, probably about eleven or twelve years ago, we realized that we're never going to win at high school unless our kids know how to wrestle coming into high school, so we started our Elgin Act Mat Rats, now we're one more successful club in the state of Michigan, but again, a lot of people helped me out, I said Coach Jake's name a second ago, where'd you go, Coach Jake? So he's another one that, he's in there, he just graduated, he's still doing his own thing in college, he's at every youth tournament, youth practice, so it's not just me, there's a whole army prepping these kids, and we like to say, you know, we're not just, we never want to rebuild again, we just want to reload every year. So this year, we took seven out of 280-plus clubs in the state of Michigan, most of the top ten are going to be your All-Star clubs that charge like tuition to go there, or are either say big-money places or big schools, so we are one of the few small schools that are competing at that level. We had three youth state champs this year, which is more than we've ever had, actually all three are here tonight to meet you guys, so that's pretty cool, and again, just, you know, a lot of people talk about the high school team, they're getting older, what can you do after they graduate? Well, I'm not in a hurry to get them out of here, because they're very, very talented, but we had six eighth graders placed in the state of Michigan this year, so, you know, one group graduates and you start training the next group to come in, so, again, I'm going to read some youth names off, these are just the ones that placed, there's about twenty of them or so, but we have a hundred and twenty kids from kindergarten through eighth grade wrestling in our programs, and again, it's for a school our size, that's pretty, pretty remarkable. So, one more thing before I start reading off, the MyWay state placers, if some of you guys don't know, girls wrestling is like the fastest-growing sport in America, girls high school wrestling statistically is the fastest-growing sport in America, so we want to make sure our girls are ready, if they get to the high school level and they want to wrestle in high school, we want to make sure they're ready for success, so some of our girls actually do more than one organization of youth wrestling, just to give them more opportunities, so there's another organization called MMWA, and that's more in the Flint area, so we have two sisters here tonight, Harper Clark and Grace Clark, they both were state runners-up in MMWA, so ladies first, we start the launch. The next group's going to be our three state champs this year, so we had three state champions, which we are now doing a really good job of tracking all this stuff, so if you ever go in the wrestling gym, check out the record boards, you'll see three first for 2024, which we had two last year, so always like to raise the bar, so this year helping us raise that state champ bar, we have Oliver Lanneman, Knox Weissopf, and Rocco Weissopf, three state champs. That was a good session. State runners-up, so this goes, and again, probably the most ever state runners-up we ever had, Max Fox, who I know is out there at baseball, Noah Bonnay, who could not be here tonight, Chase Scobler, and Jackson White, I know Chase and Jackson are here, so go ahead, take a lap, guys. Third in the state, I know Blake's here tonight, I think Cole might be at baseball, but we had two third in the state, that'd be Blake Williams and Cole Reeves, Blake Williams and Cole Reeves. Fourth in the state, and, you think, I mean, the guys, this guy was wrestling, I wanted to check some of these birth certificates, Trevor Jarvey, fourth in the state, eighth grade, wrestled some big boys, had 220 weight, 220 pounds, Trevor Jarvey. Taken fifth, I don't think he can be here tonight, he's now placed in the state, I think, four or five years in a row, that is TJ Lander, TJ Lander, fifth in the state. Grace, so Grace actually placed in both organizations, Grace, Grace took second in MMWA, but sixth in MyWay, so she gets a second in that. Seventh place, we had Barrett Nierswick and Isaiah Alashmal, I know Barrett's here, I know Isaiah's here, too, sweet, go ahead, seventh in state. In eighth place, Skylar Schmal and Victor Lombard, I know Scott, go ahead, Scott. So, if you take top eight in the state, name goes on the board, so that's what a lot of these guys and gals always shoot for, but what they don't realize is I'm tricking them into developing and getting ready for high school wrestling, so a lot of them were super excited, we are incredibly excited for the, for the future, I know we like to get a big picture, so don't leave yet, and then I got certificates to pass out to you guys, so thank you guys again for having us here and next year.
Congratulations.
More games and one year we bring that big trophy to you.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That is awesome, that is awesome. Good job, good job, everybody.
Folks, fine, a student athlete, tall guys in the back.
And before you all leave, you'll free to get cookies, they're the best cookies ever.
A lunchtime, it looks good.
Yeah, or if you want to stay.
Did you make them?
I just, I just eat them.
Just come over here.
No, I tried to get them, I tried to get them via the announcement, I don't.
Anyone that's here, just want your name to be announced, Isaiah Eli.
All right. Okay. I was mentioning the Chick-fil-A item is being removed for May, does this, does this make them? That we are actually sent agenda items, what I would like to make.
I make motion that Board of Education approves of consent agenda items, including agenda minutes, personnel items, charter, report, and those opposed against the other section.
Support, move, support any questions. Come. All right, here, done, all of us, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Bringing us to our first information item, five A's and good news.
Yeah, Dorothy Goodjoy is this evening, she's up at the Discus Official, but she gave me this to share with the group, and it is good news because we've worked really hard at this over the course of the last, well, if you take a look at last five years, particularly, but Moos Investors Services is how our credit rating is standing, so the district's credit rating, just like your personal ratings, we get one every year, and, you know, for those of you who remember helping looking back eight years ago, we were in borrowing mode at the beginning of the years, and when you do that, one balance comes down, your credit rating drops pretty significantly, and we dropped down to a BAA1, which I really don't know exactly what that means, but it's not good. And for the last five years, we've had a pretty steady progression, and up to an A2, which I know A1 is the very next one, because when we were doing our phone call with Moos and it's about an hour-long process, and they, they, you know, all kind of things enrollment, numbers, demographic information, but when we got to that point, he was, he said a first brush, get least an A2, but you guys were trending toward an A1, so as we get there, that's where we were fifteen years ago.
Do you know what, did they give you, like, did you work out this and this, or did this and this increase as I'm looking at A1?
That's a good question, we got a few things that kind of work against us, you know, we still graduate classes that are slightly higher than what we're bringing in, so obviously with enrollment generating, you know, state funds, that's one that kind of works against us a little bit, but, you know, they look at healthy fund balance, they look at all those types of things, you know, are you borrowing, have you borrowed in the last few years, and, you know, those are all positives for us, so we've got a lot going that way. Like I said, there are certain things, and, you know, another thing they look at is the amount of industry in the area, you know, there are certain things that work against us, but, you know, in terms of what I think we can control as a district, we're pretty good shooting.
So the message is, keep doing what we're doing because the longer we have, the longer duration of stability.
Yep.
The more, the better.
Now, the enrollment should be leveling off, they've graduated the big, bigger classes and bringing us along, we have that big chunk of students that are going through, they're, they're graduated now, or they're graduating now?
So we've got.
They're like three years in a row where, where those is comfortable going through.
Yeah, we have two classes that are coming through right now, I believe, eighth and ninth, Ryan, are those the biggest?
Yeah.
Okay, that are still coming through, that will be a dip. With that said, the next couple will be about stable. And when I, when I say a dip, Andy, we're, we're down to where, you know, those used to be seventy and eighty kids per year because we graduate such big classes, and the incoming K class was under a hundred, you know, now, when we look at that, it's, we always build in the budget twenty kids as opposed to seventy, so even that number is kind of stabilized, so, and then at some point, we'll just be graduating the same amount we're bringing in.
Any other questions, Ralph? All right, up next, we have our administrative reports, Mr. Melrose.
Yep, right now, we're kind of right in the midst of SAT and PSAT testing, it's the first time we've done it online, and it's going very well, it's pretty simple, College Board has actually set up a nice program, pretty easy to use, and we've had no glitches, so when the kids are getting on, they, nobody's been kicked off or any issues like that, it's been pretty easy to run. Administratively, it's, it's nice because we don't have to box up a bunch of books and all that, and all the labels and all that, but it's going, it's going very well, and the next week, we start unstep testing, which again, has been online for a while now, so that's, that's old hat, but we're, but the testing's going smoothly. Last week, we have, we were at, we had the BWAG Honors Luncheon, which recognizes our academic students as well as our, we pick as our male and female Athletes of the Year, and so for the, for the academics, they're chosen by their GPA based on 4.0 scale and their SAT score, and so our five representatives from our school were Ian Avers, Thomas Avers, Sidney Casey, Casey Hoben, and Griffin Melrose, and then the BWAG, the Male Athlete of the Year was David Clemmons, and the Female Athlete of the Year was Cam Taylor, so congratulations to them. This Wednesday, at the Blue Water Trades Fair, it's going to be at Hills Park there, it's going to be on Wednesday again, and we've got a great big group of kids, and it's going to go on here from here, so again, anytime we can open the eyes to students, it's available to them, it's always a good thing for the kids to go see, and some pretty exciting news is, we, we interviewed a candidate for our band director position, James Kivinsky, he's actually, lives in Elgin Act, he's been the band director selflessly for eight years, came in, we had quite a few different people on our interview board, you know, people that could make it, we had some questions that they submitted, and we had actually some students sitting on the board, and unanimously, unanimously, when we met with them, we felt that this is the person we can move forward with, if going forward for the future, and so he has accepted the position, and he's going to, like, they have, I believe, a spring event, it's on May ninth, and you kind of want to stay a little bit after that, but probably mid-May is when you'll be able to get on board, it should be nice, kind of be ready for the summer and all, prepare for the fall, so we're excited about having James on board. But, along with that, I can't speak highly enough for our leadership of the students in the band programs. I've met with them multiple times, and specifically, our, you know, our, our senior drum major, Thomas Avers, and then our junior drum major, Tricia Niemeyer, they, they kind of take the lead in the, in the band, we're still going ahead with our May fourteenth concert, they're kind of taking the lead, and they're going to kind of do some old favorites for it, and then another senior, Phoebe Brody, has been helping out with the middle school band, and kind of getting them prepared so they can participate also in that concert, have a couple songs that they can do, so kudos to them for stepping up and, and, and taking the leadership role, and I couldn't be more proud of those students.
Brian, when, when they're testing for PSAT and things like that, are they taking it here in the lab?
Yep, yeah, we're doing it right here in the lab, it's, yep, it's, it's nice, this way, you know, you're not depending on wifi, you know, it's more, you know, on the ground in there, and, but like, again, I, I, it's probably the smoothest testing system I've had for online, it's really, we've had no glitches whatsoever, which is nice.
This is Stacy.
Hi, so we're in the midst of our unstep testing also, and we use our labs also, but our Chromebooks are set up to unstep test, so sometimes when we have smaller groups that just need a few makeups, I can have them grab their ProBooks and come with me, and we're able to do it that way, too, so it does make it go quicker. Attendance has been really great during unsteps, so it's actually going pretty quick for us. Last week, the DNR came and presented to our fifth graders in the morning, more outdoor classroom fun, so that was, that was exciting, and then the afternoon. So that was, that was exciting. And then the afternoon, our fifth graders put on a recycle art fair. So they just found odds and ends, like household item, and then made art projects out of them. They're super creative and cute and parents were able to come in and walk around and, and see that and, you know, just spend some time with their kids. Friday, we will be having the Spring Carnival. PTO is putting it on. We're already getting loads of money in the office for tickets, so we're expecting it to be a pretty big event. And also on Friday, our third graders are going to go to Goodell's for the Earth Fair as their spring field trip. And coming up in May, we have second graders and fifth graders on May 2nd doing their spring concert. And on May 16th, Performing Arts will be doing their, their spring presentation too. So, Mel's side, we just finished up March's reading month and we were really proud because we gave out 250 Jimmy John Fields certificates to our kids and families for them to spend a night out at the ball field for all their reading that they did. So that was exciting. We have kindergarten roundup coming up next week, May 2nd and 3rd. We currently have 86 kindergartners, which is a lot for this point in the spring. So, you know, looking like we're going to have a pretty decent sized kindergarten class coming in. I was fortunate enough to attend the elementary talent show last Friday night. And if you were there, we had a whole bunch of kids that performed that night. Did a great job. It was very entertaining. It was just a nice night out. So our kids getting up there. And of course, today was Earth Day. So the kindergartners and first graders learned all about their earth and how they can help it. And if you're ever wondering, you can just ask a kindergartner. They have a whole lot of things they want to tell you about. I got to care about it all lunchtime. On the curriculum forefront, we, the elementary group piloting the English Language Arts Curriculum, have two days of meetings over the next two days with Amplify on a Zoom call. So we are doing our final checking with them before we finish up our pilot to wrap up and then come kind of let you know how that's going. So we do meet with Amplify over the next two days. In high school, Minnetorrel from the RISA has been working with Eric Frank, our physics and chemistry teacher. They went and visited Allen Park High School to watch the Open Sied Curriculum in action there for physics and chemistry. Real excited with some of the things that we're seeing and bringing back to our students and how we can make those classes really great for them. So look for some stuff coming for that as well. So Mr. Frank's very excited to get some things in his hands and get started and seems to be very good.
Thank you. Mrs. Lutowski?
So our preschool teachers are preparing for end of the year conferences. As far as summer goes, things are starting to get busy for us. Our younger latchkey summer program is actually very full. We do have a few spots available for the older children. Some exciting things. We are starting to incubate some chicken eggs, which is always such a cool experience for our whole building, the staff and children. And I had mentioned at the last board meeting that we were being observed by class. They did come out and give us our new rating for a great start to quality. The scale used to go by stars, one through five, but recently changed to quality levels. After observation, our building received demonstrating quality, which is equivalent to five stars. So I am very proud of my staff for that accomplishment.
Any board reports?
I just wanted to let everybody know, I went to the State Community Association of School Boards meeting on April 9th. We finalized seven scholarship winners. I did, we talked about general, a meeting, so I gave them all of our points that we talked about. How we want, we would like it on a different day. We wanted dinner prepared by students at the coloring arts program. We talked about a lot of different things to make it, make it better. The reason that they put it on the tech was to try to get more people there. So.
Or are they, they're worried that without tech open house, even getting school board numbers to come?
Right, right. And we talked about extending it also to 90 minutes instead of 60. So that we can hear not just MASP, but everyone. It's not so rushed. We can ask questions and things like that. And they talked about the Creekside Learning Center?
Yep.
The behavior program for K-5. And that's going to be in front of our.
It's, yeah, eventually it's going to be at the, right at, on the back end of the Woodlands, I think is what they want it. But yeah, currently it will be. They said they're working on staffing, but they fully anticipate opening in the fall. Something that's a big ask for us. So Creekside is, you know, for quite a few years, we've talked about emotionally impaired students in that lower range that are, are pretty high need and probably more than you would handle with your, you know, general staff. And we've identified that throughout the county as a need. There are kids that wouldn't qualify for Woodlands because it's a different kind of kid. It's a different kind of disability. And so we have been, back when Kevin Miller was still up at RISA, we began to talk about this. It would be nice if we could service those students in a way that could be really beneficial to them. And they started putting a lot of work, a lot of blood, sweat and tears. And we're now at the point where it's become a reality. It'll start with two classrooms. And if it's, you know, goes beyond that, that's great if it expands. If not, you know, it'll still be for the, for our district and for the county in general.
Is there a limit to how many from our district?
So they've got a, they have a entrance criteria and they've done it to where they're not, they don't want to put a number on anything. They want to do it based on the actual need criteria, knowing that some years we may have zero, some years we might have two. And, you know, the, you know, the thing about the two classrooms is it's a very low teacher to student ratio. And so, you know, and you're really talking the amount of staff that will be in those classrooms. And that's the other thing about having it where they're looking to, the RISA is able to provide some outside support. But you're talking about having a speech person onsite, social worker in the classroom, teacher in the classroom, paraprofessional, you know, interventionist level thing. So it's a, it's kind of a little red carpet.
That's good on them for doing that because I remember a couple of meetings, a couple of years ago, those meetings, it was concerns of the board members that yet attended. So it's good that they listened to.
It was, and it's, you know, that, that if there is a negative to it, it is a costly program. But we know that going in and, you know, I, I always think when you take a look at the resources that maybe we use here and, you know, that money well spent, especially where they can have all those services right there at their fingertips. Where here we have people going in between buildings and that type of stuff. They'll have everybody right there on that campus, you know. Pretty exciting. Start with K-5 and if they go, they feel if it expands out and there's a need at the middle school level, then.
That's called Creekside?
Creekside.
Thank you. Mrs. Lutowski?
Couple items for you tonight. First of all, the Senate has come out with their budget proposal for the overall budget for the upcoming school year. So we're waiting right now just on the House Governor's Budgets. And Governor's Budget was pretty, I mean, there's a few variances, but it's, at least in the per people funding, it's very, very close to what the governor is. So my guess is when the House comes in, it'll probably be hopefully in that same range. And it's just nice going into no. Understand what kind of, you know, what kind of money we have and when we sit down with our employee groups that we've released a pretty good number. It won't be exact because they probably won't finalize until the, I'm guessing, end of June before they get it all done. But at least we'll have a pretty good idea, I think, once, once the House comes with their budget. Tonight, you guys have some action items on there for our summer project list. There's two still that are floating out there, our parking lot and our bleachers. Those have both been bid out. We're just, we got them back. We're analyzing the bids on them. More than one bidder. They're pretty close. So Evan is working with Chip Hendrick to kind of get an explanation of what we're really looking at. The parking lot bid will probably go back out when we started to take a look. So anyone that's been through our parking lot knows the areas, I'm sure. But in the circle drive, you know, you got to kind of make sure your mowers aren't placed before you go driving through there. And then of course, this area right on the front over here that kind of has been eroding and, you know, you see the big area that's kind of become a dirt pile with big puddles. So we looked at the quotes and looked at, because remember, our idea was that we would talk and looked at it and we have, well, we lose enough money to where we can go through and at least do those key areas kind of get their full. So a few more dollars, but I think well worth it because that bus loop over there is, I think we can do small children in there inside of those holes. So it'll be nice to have that fixed and on this area up here as well. So those two will be coming to you in May.
Do you think timing wise, would you still be trying to do the parking lot before next school year? And then bleachers is after football season still?
That's what it looks like. Yeah, the bleacher people, you know, it's quite a process. And once we, you know, settle on it, we have two bids on it. They're both very close in terms of financially, real, real close, which is why we've kind of gone back to chip with it to say, okay, you know, tell us what's different, what's, you know, what's better, what's worse, that kind of stuff. But the one group anyway that we talked to initially, they said it would probably be an October, November project, which for us means push to the end of the football season. And with that, probably at least most of the work will be done in probably in October, November, with the spring probably be when they would finalize if they needed to do that. And a lot of it's assembled. It's assembled in Evan, Texas State?
Texas.
And they drive it up on a truck and press box comes all assembled and they just drive it. It's pretty, pretty interesting learning about that. So yeah, those two will be coming to you.
But the, the track would be this summer?
Track, that's, yeah, that track is separate. That one's, that one will be done. I think they're looking as soon as we're done with our last meter. Actually, I take that back graduation. They're going to look to start going on the track so that it's on there for action tonight. You guys will see that on. So, you know, we had talked about how the law changed with evaluation in general and my evaluation changed right along with it. So MASP is in the process right now of fine tuning the tool that you guys use, the evaluation. And so with that, we'll come more training for you. They've got, what they've done is that they can come in either in person, they can do it via Zoom, whatever works for this group. But they are going to finalize, they said by the end of April, they would have their ducks in a row and the tool will be done. So I'm guessing sometime maybe over the summer, when we get a little bit slow, maybe we could get together and do it. Maybe Zoom is the best way or if we can all get together and they can probably come out. I don't think it's going to be drastically different. I think what they want to do is just talk about changes. I want from a four-point rubric down to a three-point rubric.
And that's probably not MASP insisting you do the training, that's the law, right?
Well, the law dictates it, but MASP has said that it needs to, that you wouldn't be, I don't know what they said exactly, sort of qualified, certified unless you did their training. Yes. I think we better do that. And outside of that, I have negotiations, which we'll talk about in closed session. But we met initially with the teachers. I have the custodians group coming in tomorrow for our first talk. And then the para pro and secretary group, I have them, dates. I've sent them and waiting here back for them. So that process will all start. Be a busy, busy spring.
We do have a couple of visitors who would like to speak to the board tonight. Since we have a couple, just I'll share my quick spiel. Please try and hold it to five minutes. The board may or may not respond. We're listening. I promise. We do appreciate the feedback. So looking forward to hearing from you all. First up will be Ms. Amber Braggett. Would like to speak about communication between school and parents.
I'd like to say that I think we really need to focus on the importance of prompt and proper communication between the administration and parents. My phones were blowing up for the last 72 hours. No one knew what exactly happened or what was going on. And when we as parents don't know and aren't given information from our children's school, we're only left to wonder, worry, search for answers. When our minds wander, we end up hearing a lot of rumors and assumptions and good old fashioned BS. And it's not fair. A woman's life has been changed forever. Our students have been verbally abused online in threads defending their school and a person they truly care about. And we've been trashed on social media. So as things unfold and we deal with the fallout of this, I hope you guys think about how much of this could have been avoided with one, albeit awkward, email to parents.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Sam Dobbs. Would like to speak about recent and past events.
I originally had like three pages, but for two reasons. One, it's past my bedtime. And the second one is I think you'll be able to connect the dots. There's two issues I'd like to address. The first one is this weekend, I got a lot of phone calls and was made aware of an inappropriate picture of a staff member on social media. I know that's a big, I hope that Nicole probably all heard about it. I hope that this issue is being investigated. I would like to see an independent administrator investigate it. So we know that it's being investigated. At this part, point, as far as I know, parents have not been notified of any ongoing investigation. So that's the big issue. Like what you said there is we don't know what's going on. We're assuming what's going on. We don't know. No, no communication. And if this allegation is found to be true, I would expect that the board and law enforcement to take the appropriate action. My second issue is when the position of assistant principal is supposed to be two advocates. My understanding of that process was that both candidates made a presentation. Then an anonymous vote was taken to determine who would get the job. And I got that information from two of the staff members that were on that committee, which is in the past, we never, the ones, the committees I was on never chose a staff member that one. We met as a group. We discussed it as a group. We voted as a group. So everyone knew who voted for who. Then if there was a continuing debate, then we may take another vote. But when you do things in that manner where they are so safe and secret, you don't know if that's a true outcome. I mean, I trust them all, but on the other hand, it's, it's not in the light of day. Now, the second thing I want to talk about is Mark Sims was one of the advocates and a good friend of mine. I think everybody knows Mark Sims. He was not chosen for that position. I've known Mark Sims for almost 30 years. He's a true muskrat, a master teacher, coach, and mentor. He did want the position. He and I discussed the job and he was very interested in moving into that position. There needs to be more of a check and a balance on hiring staff at the school. I would like to see a board member involved in hiring practice and beyond the committee when we hire a staff member. So that your, our, our board is sometimes disconnected from what's going on. They need to get involved and hire these staff members so they can have their input. And remember, our, our students are watching what we're going to do here. So go rats. do here. So go ask.
Next, we have Dave Myself to talk about virtue to, sorry, restoring virtue to education. Thank you.
Good evening. I just heard what the gentleman said here and kind of goes along with what I've come to talk about a team before. I want to continue to present that to the board, superintendent, because we have a vested interest. I was happy to see the accolades we're giving the students here today. I'm all about extracurricular things, you know, sports and everything. It's great. I heard Brian mentioned a couple of names that are familiar to me, Amers. I know Marion Miller. Miller was a postman here in Elgin Act and Marion still, like ninety, still lives on Shore Row, so that would be her great grandchildren. But one thing I knew about Marion and Miller is they were people of high integrity. And that filtered down to their children, to their grandchildren, and now to their great grandchildren. I don't know these individuals, but it didn't surprise me when I heard the Amers name. So what I'm, what I'm here to talk about is, I talk about virtue. The academics are part of our virtue, our proficiencies in the key educational subjects, math, reading, writing, arithmetic, math. I looked throughout the county, they're thirty, forty percent. And as a member of the community, as a contributor to public schools, my concern is we're not getting them money. We're not getting valuable money for spending on identification. It's great we have great sports teams. But at the end of the day, I'm telling you right now, I've got a chance to travel the world. The foreign countries are eating our lunch when it comes to academics. I, I deal with engineers that are brought up in countries where they barely had electricity. But they can take most people in this country, engineers from the best engineering schools, stand them on their head, spin them around at the top. So if we don't get back to the core academics, then we're in trouble as a community, as a nation. We've talked about this before, Harrison versus Board of Education in the forties. It started the decline of morality and virtue. For some reason, the Supreme Court decided at that time that they were going to brush out things of faith out of our school. And that continued all the way up until, until it was the year 2000 that they banned all prayer at school. Now, we have to think, we have to ask ourselves, they, they did all of that for the betterment of our students. That was for their good, right? We wouldn't do anything for them unless it was for the good. My question is, how's that working out? Nineteen ninety-nine was the first mass shooting in the Columbine. We've had like twelve, thirteen since then. And in my opinion, it's just my opinion, but the morality of our society, communities, even our nation, is lacking. This gentleman just said a school staff member did something inappropriate. We hear about that every day now. And so, and I've talked to other people, asked them, hey, I just, I just don't want my opinion. If the schools were to change anything about morality, what would, what would you do? And I said, well, they said, well, you know, first of all, you know, I don't want them to teach religion per se. That's not what I want. That, that belongs in the home. Morality belongs in the home. And I agree with that. I agree with that. And again, I've all thought at the school is to embrace that principle. And I think we can do a better job. So I just challenged the school, the, in 2022, the Lemon Test was overthrown. And the Lemon Test was laws that were put on the book that said you couldn't have any, any reference to religion in school because it was a violation of the Establishment Clause. Those have all been taken off the books. Those no longer exist. Everything from nineteen forty-five all the way to 2000, those have all been removed. So we as, you as, we as a community, we as educators, as a board, as a superintendent, we have an opportunity to at least present these things back to the students. And, you know, we had talked about even just the policy and management commandments and in the school as a start. And I would just ask, David Strong, I know you said like during the summer, you, you take a break and decide what kind of policies you're going to have. That, I was asking, strongly consider of reestablishing something that the children are aware. I think to take that away from them and deny them an opportunity, I think is a grave mistake. Someday I'm going to have to stand, we said, we pledge allegiance, we pledge allegiance to one nation and a God. I believe there is a God. I believe someday I have to stand before him and answer what I did. I think you as a superintendent, you as a school board, I would take that responsibility extremely seriously and say, what am I going to answer? What did I do?
Then we have Mr. Robert Mitchell. Topic was, he was thinking about it.
I have a lot of these, I have a shortage for words. I have no intention of speaking this evening. I figured, compassion, humility, grace, these are my three words for you this evening. This is what we set the mood. And from there, I say thank you for exhibiting those to a right. Heckless school year, so far. We've got more to come, obviously. And I trust that you'll use those three words to continue to make your decisions. And it is, and we'll say it would really help. I don't know how we balance this. And I've talked to a number of people about this, but transparency has to be key within this community. In this day and age of social media, it's out there before you blink an eye. And then the Monday morning quarterbacks and coaches show up and they're off to the races all weekend long. Send an email saying, hey, we're handling this. I don't need any details. I promise you that. But this has happened. Here's our, here's what we can tell you right now. We're handling it. Simple as that. So again, come back to grace, compassion, humility. Has to change the order up just slightly. So thank you. And have a good evening.
All right. We now have a handful of action items. And we'll start with action item seven, a summer twenty-four door security additions and upgrades. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to request board approval to award the Elgin Act Junior Senior High School and Point Tremble Early Childhood Center additions and upgrades project, our current security system provider, telecom technicians incorporated in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars for Elgin Act Senior Junior High School weight room and the amount of sixty-eight thousand, one forty-eighteen for new security access control at Point Tremble Early Childhood Center.
For any questions?
On the camera in the weight room?
Yep.
Is that going to be monitored like Dave's office or, I know you got the cameras. It just for recording purposes to say, hey, something happened in the weight room. Let's go look at it.
Yeah. And, and, you know, in there, you know, just like anything, a lot of brand new equipment, right? And just, just, you know, and heaven forbid someone ever get hurt in there. You know, give a ass, as I do. And then the other one, just so you know, the doors at Point Tremble, if you remember when we did the safety grant back in 2020, we did the doors here, we did the doors over at Elgin when, and we've kind of been picking up the rest of them year to year. So we did Millsides. Point Tremble will be the final building. Dana's been beating on me to make sure we get that taken care of. Same company that's done our other system. And so that will be the final part of the door projects and they will be completed. So that's what expenses.
Thank you for continuing to move those. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Up next is the Elgin Act Junior Senior High School locker painting. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to request board approval to award the student locker painting project to the lowest bidder, American Office Services, Inc., in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred and forty-five. Now, support.
Support. Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I know we're going to lowest bidder. I mean, quite a lot, it looks like.
Quite a bit.
Quite a difference. Is there, is it apples to apples?
It is. We looked at, there was two things that we had looked at. Evan probably talked a little bit more about that. But electrostatic paint was like the very, the number one thing that we, that might have you want to elaborate a little bit.
Yeah. So we put the bid out. Electrostatic was the preferred painting method because it contains all your overspray. You can actually use a harder paint on it. It's what was done previously in the bar hallway here. The other companies did a high-volume pressure painting, which is hard to contain the overspray. So you end up with blue sealantals and all that. It's actually a harder paint through electrostatic. And this company, this is all they do. They don't paint houses. They don't do that. They paint office furniture. So file cabinets, anything that is metal. They basically do electrostatic paint. That's all they do. So they're kind of a little more specialized as opposed to the other two, which will general paint companies who paint everything from houses to walls. They don't do paint. So it's actually, it's, I was quite surprised at the price. I was looking to shoot holes in it and I just couldn't shoot holes in it.
So they're insured and everything else?
It'll be the, it'll be the muskrat navy color as opposed to the color.
All right.
I'll make city blue.
All those in favor say aye? All right. Next up, we have the summer twenty-four phone system update and upgrade project. Would anyone like to speak up?
I'll motion to request board approval to award the Cisco phone system update and upgrade project to Presidio Network Solutions Group, LLC, the amount of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Current phone system from 2010, this is the Cisco, who's kind of does quite a bit of phones at schools. The system actually will be pretty similar, just with maybe a few more bells and whistles on there as it pertains to security and some of those types of things. But we're, we're a beat of an upgrade. Evan has a hard time getting parts and getting phones. And when phones go down, we either go without for a certain stretch and we know we don't want to do that. So, you know, fifteen years, we've got our, we've got our use out of those phones or that system.
Is there a phone in each classroom? Now, I see there's like, one of the things we're paying for is emergency responder. Are we able to like push messages out there or no? I mean, can we use our phone as a local system or?
It, it can, it can, we can set it up anyway. We're going to be purchasing additional of the ID lines so that we can actually do nine-one-one calls based to the classroom or groups of classroom. Current phone system has been in the light for five years now. We cannot buy just new phones for it. We have to buy refurbished phones. So it's just getting to where we, we can't kick it down the road any longer. We got to have to do something. And then have all these modern features where we can do some enhanced things that we couldn't do in the past.
Like you can't push out like warning or this or that or this or that?
You, you, you can, I mean, you can make phone calls. You can make phone calls to groups and things like that. That would be, you know, the programming capabilities of the system is far greater. We never even really touched what our original phone system can do. So it's a matter of us verbalizing to, to the integrators of how we want that to look. How are we going to control?
I just know that in my work.
How is that going to report so that building administrators know something happened in the building? So it's, it's got a lot of capabilities for us to kind of focus and see how we're going to use it.
Because I know at my work, if there's an emergency or something, they can push it through our phones and we'll get messages like on our phones.
Right.
So that's nice.
Well, we also have the PA system. You have to sometimes look at overload because are you using the phone or are you using the PA? Are you using all of them? And then there's everybody can get bombarded all at once by five different things and nobody's doing anything. So I think that's, that's on us to figure out how we want those situations to work and then make our.
Because that's what they have the capability. Because that's a nice feature.
And then like Evan said too, you know, the nine-one-one, you know, forever with this system has been, it came from Elgin Act Junior Senior High School as opposed to it came from room one twenty-one in Elgin Act Junior. So I think that those are nice features and it makes a difference.
Evan, is this mostly here, here in the, in the data center? I see catalyst switches and things like that. Is there?
There is. So we went, I'm not a huge cloud implementer yet. There is a cloud solution for this. This is another premises device. I don't like our phone system being contingent upon the internet working, if the internet ever goes down. So we are doing it on premises solution. And then there's a couple of their gateways in the other buildings. So if fiber does get cut between buildings, phone communications can still route around.
But you don't detect that Cisco is no longer investing in their on-prem solutions and things like that. It's all, is cutting edge is what they've gotten.
Yeah. I mean, your, your Ciscos and your Nord tells, those are still the guy, the founder, those are still the guys you deal with.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up, we have the Elgin Act Junior Senior High School track upgrade project. Would anyone like to make a motion up now?
Make a motion, category one, request board approval to award Elgin Act Junior Senior High School for asphalt track upgrades, all trades to low bidder, Astec Asphalt Inc. in the amount of hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. And category two, to request board approval to award Elgin Act Junior Senior High School, big category, for track surface markings to low bidder, Current Surfaces, Inc., in the amount of two hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Support.
Tracks have gone up quite a bit since we did this last time. I think Evan and I will probably undershot it a little bit. But we had quite a few bids though, right, Evan?
Yeah, we had five bids total, two on, on category one and three on category three.
I remember when, three times ago, it cost like sixty grand to re, completely mill up the surface, put a new surface down and paint it. So, yeah.
How much does cinder cost?
We're looking at sawdust for the pipe.
But that's the asphalt comes in and then the other parts that?
Then they finish the top.
Finish the top.
And we haven't done that since when? To go all the way down?
Oh, we did, that, that was the last time, probably in early two thousands, early to mid-two thousand before we went all the way down. But it's been a while.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And with that is eight oh eight. I would like to make a motion that the board go into closed sessions at eight fifteen for the purposes of discussing negotiations and staffs.
Eight fifteen?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight.